All right, we have 6:29 and we will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Today, we're going to start with the financial audit presentation, so I would like to invite up Peter Hefner from the, from Vrediveld Hefner to present their findings.
I see the red light is on. Thank you for having me.
There we go.
My name is Peter Hefner and I represent Vrediveld Hefner. I am the review partner for your engagement. Doug Vrediveld participated in the audit and then I review his work and I review the financial statements. And so what we did is we put together some slides to show the financial perspective of the city. But first of all, I'd like to point out that on page one of the financial statements is our opinion. And at the very bottom of page one is a summary of our opinion. And it is our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate remaining funds of the city of Walker, Michigan as of June 30th, 2019, as well as the respective change in financial position and cash flows were applicable in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the, what I refer to as a clean opinion and it's that the financial statements present the information required by generally accepted accounting principles which are required to be followed by the state of Michigan as well as governmental accounting standards board. So that's very positive. With that being said, following the opinion is the management's discussion and analysis. And if you get a chance to take a look at that, there's a vast amount of information about where did the dollars come from this year and where did the dollars go to. I think we'll see that in the slides as well. Also talks about your capital projects as well as servicing of debt. I believe the MTF bonds were paid in full this year. And following the information about debt and capital projects are those assumptions used for the following year's budget. So a good place to direct the interest at public or the media. Following the management's discussion and analysis are the basic financial statements. And those statements are going to be shown in the slides, so I'm going to give a shot here. This is a picture of the governmental activities, so all of your funds pushed together and including any long-term liabilities such as pension liabilities, bonds outstanding, as well as including the capital assets of the city. And this is the referred to as a statement of activity. And what it's showing is to what extent are the functions of your city being supported by charges for services, operating grants, or capital grants? And to what extent are they being funded through income tax, property tax, state shared revenues? So to the extent you see a blue bar, the expense, and the green bar are the funding mechanisms for those operations. The differential between those two is being funded by your income taxes, state shared revenues, and property taxes which are referred to as general revenues that are not restricted to a specific purpose. I do want to point out here, when you take a look at Public Works, that does include the Act 51 funding. So that's the big green component. But very typical picture, public safety is across the cities that we're, we work with, by far the largest expenditure as a percentage of the other categories. Now here's a look at the revenues for your governmental activities. So again, we're looking at all of your governmental funds. And what's unusual here is, from the perspective of looking at many other cities, is the extent that your income tax is funding your operation. And we were just chatting, myself and your finance director, Treasurer, we were just chatting to the extent of income tax revenue this year, very large. I think it's a record year for you. And that's being shown in this picture. And also, when you take a look at your property taxes, from the entities that we audit, I think we audit four cities that have income taxes. You have by far the lowest property taxes as well. So income taxes make a big portion of those revenues funding your general government operations. The next slide we have here is looking at just an individual fund, your general fund, which funds most of the governmental operations. You can see here, historical perspective of what's happening with income taxes. That's just additional income being earned by the people that are working in the city and living in the city, no change in the rate. And then we can see what's occurring with your property taxes, state shared revenue and others. So the big driver of increases is very obvious from this picture. Here is a summary for multiple years of your income tax. I think when you take a look, when we get down at the bottom of that picture to the far left, that's when we were having some financial difficulties. I think there was a decline to that point and then an increase back up to the current point. A very strong year for you, so very positive. I know that you used some of those dollars to improve some of the buildings. I know you did a lot of major and local street work. So a lot of activity associated with that additional funding. Let me go back one here. Income tax revenue. And here's a picture of your property tax revenue. You can see where we have this trough, but property taxes really don't make up a huge portion of your funding. I think that when we take a look at state shared revenue and property tax revenue, fairly consistent. Next slide we have here are the expenditures from your general fund. You can see judicial, fairly consistent, general government, inflationary increases, public safety. You can see that that's where the bulk of the dollars are going. And then we have these other categories where we see spikes when you do projects or things of that nature that don't get capitalized. So nothing that really caused me concern. Fairly consistent picture with many cities that we work with where every category are, is increasing and to some extent, that's catching up with where many cities were at probably eight years ago. This is a picture of your general fund. Fund balance is a percentage of transfers and expenditures. And the key here is you have a fairly volatile, large revenue source in your general fund. And that would warrant having a general fund, fund balance to weather a bad situation if the economy goes down or you lose a major employer. It makes sense to have a solid fund balance. I believe your policy is 15%. You're above that. And you can see this year was an increase from the prior year. The financial statements that follow the management's discussion and analysis, we took a look at the government-wide activities and then we took a look at the general fund activities. We also have major and local street funds and a lot of smaller funds that are used to provide a home for legally restricted dollars like Act 51 dollars or fuel, gas and weight tax dollars and the related expenditures. So there's a great deal of detail within the report itself. And if you work your way to the very back for those smaller funds, you'll see detail of the revenues, the expenditures, the balance sheet at the end of the year, as well as budget and actual presentations. In the notes to the financial statements, a lot of information about pension, debt, capital assets, the policies that you follow. And there's an option within generally accepted accounting principles. And I'd be happy to focus on any component of those pages if you would like, or I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hefner? Comments? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for your staff, their hard work in getting this together as well. These are their financial statements and your financial statements. So we appreciate all the hard work they put into this process.
Yes. And I know we certainly appreciate the work that our staff does on this. And Darrell, you go ahead.
Oh yeah, I just again wanted to thank Peter and especially Doug and Mike of Vrediveld for working on the audit with us. And then Dan and Julie and everybody on our staff providing them information. I think it was pretty, pretty smooth. It's always a rough couple of weeks with a lot of, a lot of hustle and bustle going on, but I think you can see the payoff is well worth it. And we had another really strong year. And Pete, I don't know if maybe you could summarize maybe the OPEB and the pension, where we stand on those.
Sure.
Those are big numbers and we are working our way on chipping those down, but I think it'd be worthwhile for the commission if you could point out where we stand on those liabilities.
Sure. If, if you have the financial statements, I'm looking at page 47. There's a historical table that provides information about your pension plan and to what extent it is funded. So if you take a look about midway down page 47, your net pension liability is $9 million as of 2018. And that's always measured at December 30th, 2000, or December 30th. So each year is as of December 30th. And your funding percentage is 62%, which has increased just about every year. Last year, it dipped from that year, but it's very dependent on the interest income being earned on the investments. When you take a look at the very next page, on page 48, this shows you to what extent are you putting dollars aside for your pension. And you can see for the past four years, you've put a half million dollars extra into the fiduciary net position of that operation. I would point out that next year, they're going, Michigan Employee Retirement System is going to change the assumptions, which is going to change that funding percentage again. What would really be nice is if you can beat the assumption of the investment rate of return. They're going to decrease it. If you beat it, ultimately, you'll end up in a better funding position. All the participants in Michigan Employee Retirement System get the same rate of return. So if their assumption is going to be coming up low, it would be nice because it'll allow you to not contribute as much going down the road. And if you take a look on page 49, that's your other post-employment healthcare liability. There, the new standards being followed have been followed for three years. So we have three years of data. And for the pension, I think we have five or six. But you can see here that your net other post-employment benefit liability has gone down from 2017 to 2019. Looks like approximately 30%. So very positive there. And the funding percentage is consistently getting better. And on the following page, you can see to what extent you have under or overfunded that liability based on what the actuary is suggesting to be funded. So two of the largest liabilities, your city manager is pointing out is that other post-employment benefit liability and that pension liability. And you're kind of chipping away at that pension liability, putting extra money against it every year. And the OPEB liability is actually declining, so positive. Any other questions I can answer?
No. Dan?
It's just, um, it's a monument, the management consultation's another independent, I think it's probably another discussion we have with our treasurer after this, I think would be the proper way. This would, the three bullets there, the counts, the amounts receivable. And like, so there's, I see that as things that you find that we should change.
Yeah. So as part of our audit, we're required to make communications with the board. We can do it verbally or in a written format, and we do it in writing. And we talk about our responsibilities, your responsibilities. And this is where we would put opportunities for improvements in your system of internal controls. And I had an opportunity to talk to the partner who was, I'm working on the engagement out here, said Dan's made a lot of strides towards putting things in place from last year. And so we bring some more things to the table and say, take a look at these items and see if there's something you can put in place to help address that. So yeah, they're basically suggestions for improvements or opportunities. Take a look at something, can we do it differently or is it adequate?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Looks like we're all set on that. Thank you very much, Peter. You know, reading through the financial statements, it's just credit to all the work that our city does to make sure that we are doing a good job of managing the city financially. And, you know, credit to the work of our finance committee, all of our city staff, and everyone who puts a lot of effort and time into the budget that we put together every year. And, you know, really just good practice all around. I see our finance director, Dan DeBries, down in the audience. Did you have any comments you wanted to add or just here for the show? All right. Well, that being the case, I think then we will move on to the discussion on consent agenda items. And the first one that we wanted to discuss, I see Travis Mayberry out in the audience here to present on the resolutions involving Cambridge Grove. So if you want to come up and kind of walk us through that?
Yes. Good evening. So item 10, you'll see A and B. There's two different resolutions for the Cambridge Grove development. One relates to Phase 1A and one relates to Phase 2. Ken Verwors in the audience here, he's the developer for the Cambridge Grove development. So Cambridge Grove is developed under the site condominium procedures, which basically just means that there's a lot more paperwork on our end, but it's, it's a much more expedited over the normal plat procedures. So the first memo you have, item 10A, is the release of a temporary cul-de-sac easement for Phase 1A. So they extended the road, that temporary cul-de-sac's no longer there. So therefore, that easement no longer needs to be there. So that's what that first memo from Scott is about. And then the release of easement has been signed by Ken. And if it's approved by the city commission tonight, we can get that signed. And then I think Sarah, you have the original right now. And then we can get that recorded with the county. So there's a resolution back there, Resolution 19-540, that is the release of that easement. The next big packet, which is 20 some odd pages, is really just a bunch of paperwork to say that there's a resolution under Attachment C. So in order, in the site condominium, these roads will be public roads. And all of the work's been done on the public roads. And we've done a couple, a couple of walkthroughs with Ken. He's addressed all of our items, so we're ready to accept the roads into our public system. When we accept them into the public system, we have to pass a resolution that meets Act 51 standards. And that resolution is under Attachment C at the very back of that 19541 resolution. The reason we put the rest of the paperwork in there is mostly just for record keeping. So I've got some paperwork in there that talks about the transfer of right-of-way from the Ottawa County Road Commission to the city of Walker for a section of Kennelmoor south of Richmond. That will be part of this, that's part of one of these streets that's been developed. The second, that's Attachment A. Attachment B is the warranty deeds, which basically just gives, Ken's given us the land underneath the roads in a plat. It's part of the plat process. On a site condo, we actually have to get a warranty deed to get the land underneath of the road. So that's in there. And then Attachment C is the Act 51 resolution. So all we're passing to date is the Act 51 resolution. I will submit the whole package to MDOT when it comes time for Act 51 certification.
Perfect. Any questions from the commission? All right. And did the developer have any additional comments on it? Or do you feel comfortable with the information as presented? Okay. Does anyone have any concerns for it on the agenda later? Or we all feel comfortable saying that Travis and our friends from Cambridge Grove are all set? All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have some items from ordinance committee that are going to be on our agenda tonight. So if we wanted to discuss those briefly, I see Dan Powers in the audience as well. Dan, if you want to give everybody a quick rundown of that, or at least whatever we can get through in, in the committee of the whole.
Do you mind if I pop up to PowerPoint?
Yeah. Feel free. We're cruising right along. Remember, the last financial audit took up the whole half hour.
Don't forget about the bills on the consent.
Yep, yep, yep. We'll, we'll get there.
Evening, everybody. Many of you are on the ordinance committee and you've seen these ordinance amendments over the course of the last year, but some of you are not and have not seen them. So let me run through four different sets of zoning ordinance text amendments. And feel free to stop me if you have questions or ask questions at the end. We've been talking about food trucks for a while, or mobile food vendors. We kind of expanded the terminology there because there are things like mobile barbecue pits and things of that nature that are not necessarily trucks, but still the spirit of what we're trying to address with this ordinance. So we have these mobile food vendors that we are looking to formalize and regulate in our zoning ordinance and in our business ordinance of our city code. And what this ends up being is a regulation of sites where mobile food vending is permitted as a temporary use, as well as the vendors themselves as a business. So I'll run down the list on, on kind of the sites column, and then on the vendors column. And we can talk about how that's formatted, and then I can move on to the next ordinance amendment. So in terms of sites, these mobile food vending operations are sort of temporary land uses. And what we ended up allowing for was kind of casting a wide net, allowing these at the broad variety of zoning districts and sites as a temporary use, as long as they are on occupied sites and they're not staying overnight as a mobile food vending operation, then it's pretty, pretty loose in terms of timeframe. But there are specific regulations related to the layout of these activities, that there's clear space provided around the food trucks, room for enough parking spaces to meet the needs of the site, and 200-foot separation from brick and mortar restaurants unless there's a sign-off from the restaurant owner. And if you're parking on-street, where on-street parking is permitted, you need to have your truck in a location that's maintaining clear vision around an intersection and is not violating any traffic control orders. 10-foot building setback is another rule, and that's a sort of a fire safety benchmark and kind of a best practice. So I think I hit all the main points of what kinds of site-based regulations we have for these activities. Now to go on the vendor side, we want to make sure that these vendors are accountable to the city and that they're up to snuff on their health department, their fire department license, health department licensure, fire department requirements. And so that would be done through an annual submission of a solicitor's license that gets approved by the clerk's office for the actual business owner or food truck vendor. And when that comes in, there would be a sign-off where they commit to meeting health department regulations, fire department regulations. Fire department has an opportunity to review and sign off. And then they, the vendor also commits to turning in a temporary use permit application or helping landowners turn in temporary use permit applications to allow their annual array of activities on a given site. So say Meyer Corporate Headquarters wants food trucks twice a week during the summer for an entire year. Meyer, in partnership with their vendors, would have to turn in a temporary use permit application that's good for that year. So that's the basic structure of this ordinance. If we can zoom out, we also saw food trucks as an opportunity to take another look at our overall temporary uses. And we thought there was a room for some modernization of how this code is written. There's a lot of good stuff in there. There's a lot of temporary land uses that are valuable for the city. One thing we noticed is that there's really detailed regulation on very specific types of temporary land uses. And for the most part, we want to keep those in there. So there's a lot of existing land uses that are on these two lists you see on this slide. There are also a couple of new ones that we picked up on over the last year or two. Things like leasing trailers for apartment complexes, construction trailers, while construction activity is ongoing, temporary camping events at residential school or religious sites that are over an acrean area. And then there are other activities that are already listed within our temporary uses, within our zoning ordinance. So the way we categorize this now and the way the ordinance is reformatted is that we have some of these that are just authorized via administrative approval or really no permit required, just administrative acceptance. And that is the leasing trailers, construction trailers, these limited camping events, subject to certain land use regulations, seasonal farm housing on agricultural lots, seasonal farm stands on agricultural lots. Again, many of these things are things that are already in the zoning ordinance, or similar uses subject to the discretion of the zoning administrator. So then we move into things that require permits, and we're familiar with a lot of these activities. So food trucks, which I just talked about, would require an annual permit submission, tent sales, temporary event housing for events in large commercial lots, outdoor events, generally speaking, produce sales on non-agricultural lots, firework stands, and similar activities. So this was a kind of a fundamental reformatting of the temporary use code, but in a way that didn't totally chop it up and get rid of valuable stuff. It's just kind of a reformatting that makes more sense and gives some administrative flexibility to staff. Moving on to fences, we had a resident initiated request for a review of our fence code. And this was a good opportunity to add some quality-based rules to make sure that fencing is done appropriately. So a couple of the things you see in yellow there are new. So perimeter fencing must be installed such that the outer edge is within the lot that it's being installed on, and that no construction of fencing can occur over buried cables, irrigation systems, or public water and sewer systems. And then we also had already in our ordinance, some pretty specific language about the design and the quality of fencing that's going to stay in there. Finally, electronic message center signs. This was a tough one. This was one that we had some specific interest in reviewing locally here. And we, we took a first look at this at the beginning part of the year. And with sort of casting a narrow net of comparison communities, we saw that we were pretty, we were pretty strict compared to some other communities nearby. But then we kind of dug into that a little bit further and we saw that what we have is, for one thing, there's a good intent behind what we wrote to have a 30-second minimum interval between sign message changes on our electronic message center signs. That reduces driver distraction, still gives a lot of signage and freedom of speech to business owners and people using signs. But it is a long duration that we wanted to kind of take another look at and see how other communities were handling this. And like I said, we originally started with a more lenient number, and then we kind of scaled this out. There's some more comparison communities here, some in west Michigan, some in the east side of the state. Most of the ones you see on this table are somewhat comparable either because they're nearby or because they're a similar size of municipality. You see that the median interval there is about 12 and a half seconds. And then you look at where some of the science comes in behind this. And there's really no perfect answer for how long you should have a message center sign stick around. But what you can look at is something like the study here from a community in Pennsylvania that found basically if you're driving 35 miles an hour, at 500 feet, you're going to start to see the sign. And it would take you about 11 seconds to get from where you are to, to pass the sign. And so that's probably a good duration for one sign, kind of in a vacuum, looking at not having too much distraction from only one sign change, driving a low speed limit. Of course, if you're driving faster, you're going to see it even less, less changeover. So what we ended up with was 15 seconds as a consensus on this item to give a little bit more leniency, still have a good standard that gives a long duration for that, that sign to stick around. And it's something that's worth continuing to monitor over the years, but this will hopefully prompt compliance and still a good safety standard for drivers on the roadways as they try not to get too distracted by sign changes. So the recommendation was 15 seconds when all is said and done. So those are the four ordinance amendments. And there's always more brewing on the background, in the background.
That's right. Okay. So Dan, having gotten through that, are we going to want to have some discussion on those items during the meeting? Do we feel we should keep Dan around for that? Or does anyone feel they need? All right. Looks like we're all set with you, Dan. Thank you for coming. And I'm sure that I can elaborate on anything further if during the meeting that is necessary because I have seen these things like 100 times.
That's right.
Fair enough. All right. Thanks, everybody. All right. And real quick, before we start, just want to open the discussion on the expenditures in the amount of $5,455,406.83. Does anyone have questions, concerns, anything in the bills?
Schools, right, checks.
That's right. Always do.
We understand.
Okay. If we're all set on that one, then we will take the 60 seconds to allow the crowd to fold in. And then we'll get ready to call the regular meeting to order. fold in and then we'll get ready to call the regular meeting to order. All right. Seeing we have 7 o'clock, I will now call the regular city commission meeting to order. And I would like to invite Commissioner Glanville to offer the invocation tonight and lead the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. If we can all bow our heads for a moment. We are grateful today for our many abundant blessings. We are grateful for our first responders who give selflessly to protect and serve the community. We are grateful for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. We're grateful for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Please grant us our city officials, our mayor, and this assembled council wisdom, courage, and grace to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times with a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, and that we may find personal peace and joy in our task. In this we pray. And for the pledge of allegiance, please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
All right. And if the clerk would please call the roll.
Mayor Protam Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner Kent.
Present.
Commissioner Glanville.
Present.
Commissioner Groters.
Present.
Commissioner Heisinga.
Present.
And Commissioner DeShane.
And I will look for a motion to approve the absence of the good mayor this evening.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Heisinga, support from Commissioner Kent. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. And next we have the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have anything on the 10:14 meeting minutes? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Commissioner, Commissioner DeShane.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Groters. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. And then we have minutes from the 10:21 commission work session. Any thoughts, questions, concerns? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Heisinga.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Glanville. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. And now we will open things up for public comment. If there are any members of the public with comments regarding anything on our agenda this evening, seeing none, we will move on to presentations and proclamations. And tonight, we have the swearing-in of Officer Tyler Glass. So if I can invite our police chief, Greg Long, up to handle the swearing-in. Chief, take it away.
Thank you for this opportunity, commissioners. It's always a pleasure to welcome our newest family member to the Walker Police Department tonight. I have the honor of introducing to you our newest member, one of our newest members. We have another one that's still in training right now, but Tyler Glass. Little history of Tyler, and I'll let him explain a little bit further. He comes to us from four years of service at Rockford Police Department. He's a fair state Bulldog graduate, and he really wanted to come to work at Walker, and we were lucky enough to entice him to come work for us. So this evening, I have the pleasure of also deferring the oath of office of a Walker police officer, and I think it's very important. I have this opportunity, and I always take opportunity with the new officers when they first start to talk to them, but in this setting, I think it's very important to reiterate what it means to be a Walker police officer. So my message to you is the symbolism of pinning the badge is going to be a career or something in your career you're never going to forget. It's deep rooted in symbolism. It's just not the act of receiving the badge, but there's many traditions that go with it. When you receive this badge, you're reciting the oath of honor by raising your right hand and swearing to diligently protect the rights of all our citizens through unbiased, personal, and compassionate service. As our department's vision statement states the following, we will be an organization devoted to customer satisfaction and the principles, principles of quality leadership. The statement is not simply rhetoric as part of our policy manual, but more importantly is a mission for you as a Walker police officer to engrain as part of your mindset as a policing service philosophy. The Walker police badge presented to you this evening should serve as a constant reminder of this vision. The badge represents the people we are sworn to protect and serve. It identifies you as the protector of peace and the defender of evil. As a Walker police officer, you are held to a higher ethical standard than those that you will be serving, not because you're any better than anyone else, but what the Walker police badge represents. Honor, dignity, integrity, truth, and justice, all ideals you should strive for daily. I encourage you not to let your ego or personal agenda dictate your character as you run the risk of superseding the responsibility that is represented by the privilege of wearing the police badge. So you see the badge is much more than a symbol of authority to be worn on your uniform. It will be your constant reminder to the commitment of service you are accepting to become a Walker police officer. Lastly, remember to stay grounded, humble, and dedicated to serving in this noblest of professions. And with that being said, now I have the distinct pleasure of issuing the oath of office as a Walker police officer. So if you would raise your right hand, Tyler. As a Walker police officer, you are to act as an official representative of our city and are required and trusted to work within the law. Your powers and duties as a police officer are conferred upon you by the state of Michigan by statute. Your fundamental duties as an officer include serving the community, safeguarding lives and property, protecting the innocent, keeping the peace, and ensuring the rights of all to liberty, equality, and justice. Our expectations are that you should perform all of your duties impartially without favor or affection or ill will, and without regard to status, sex, race, relation, political belief, or aspiration. All citizens will be treated equally with courtesy, consideration, and dignity. Do you swear to perform these duties?
I do.
And to form the official pinning, girlfriend McKen, Mackenzie, I was going to say McKenna. Mackenzie is here to do the official act. And with that, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So this is Tyler's opportunity to say a few words upon joining the force. I'll let, turn it over to him.
I just promised, obviously uphold the oath of office and protect and serve the community as best I can to the most of my ability, and I thank you all for this opportunity. And there's one other thing that I'm going to do.
Oh, my gosh.
So I think we started a new tradition here in we swearing police officers, so.
I tried to make a big impact on my first time here, so.
This was not part of the conditions of employment either. We just said, this is all on his own. So if you'd take a couple moments and come around the back and say hello to our commissioners, So thank you for the opportunity. I hope your meeting is, is entertaining as the first part of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Not, not every day we get to experience a moment like that. Yeah. I think we're going to take a brief five minutes, let the family have a moment, and then we'll get things back rolling. All right. The room is starting to clear out, so I think we will get ourselves back rolling now. Yep. So next up, we have the consent agenda for expenditures in the amount of $5,455,406.83. Commissioners, do we have anything further on this? Yes, Daryl.
Just one, one comment. If you, if you look through there, you'll notice that there is a pretty large expense for Apollo Fire Apparatus.
Yeah.
That's the purchase of our new SCBA equipment. And if you recall, the last two years, we budgeted about $270,000 each year for that equipment. Well, Dave, working through some connections of his and combining orders with a couple other municipalities, was able to buy all our SCBA gear for that amount there, the $393,000. So he saved us over $100,000 by purchasing it in bulk purchase. So kudos to him. So unfortunately, part of that, part of last year's budget went back into that fund balance that we saw in the, in the audit. So that's what helped that, that balance grow a little bit.
Yeah.
But even so, great savings and good, good work on his part to get the, get all that gear, and we have it all delivered now, and they're getting it into, into function, function purposes.
And it's little things like that that we really appreciate about you guys on our staff, always finding ways to get the best bang for our buck, so to speak, when we're investing in things like that.
Yep. So just wanted to point that out. Kudos to them.
So anything further? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion, motion from Commissioner DeShane and support from Commissioner Kent. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And now we will move on to the resolutions. And first up, we have Resolution 19-540. Do any commissioners have any further comment? If not, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Heisinga.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Groters. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Resolution 19-541. Again, anything further? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Heisinga.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Groters. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And next up, we have the ordinances. And as chair of the ordinance committee, I can tell you, we have put a lot of work into the items you're seeing today, and I think any member of that committee will say so. The, they've been on the table for quite some time, and we've worked hard to get the language right. So that said, if we have any additional discussion from commissioners, I'll open things up to make sure we're all set. All right. Otherwise, I will look for a motion to move these items to second reading, correct?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Commissioner Glanville.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner DeShane. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And now if there's any other public comment, seeing as all our public is out in the hall celebrating, we will move on to commissioner and city manager comments, and we will start to our left with our managers tonight.
All right. Just a couple, couple of quick things. Thank you for everybody for returning the survey in anticipation of next Monday's strategic planning. I think we have everybody's results in, so thank you for that. And just a reminder, 4 o'clock on Monday here. We'll have that, hope to be out in two, two and a half hours. So we'll have Al Vandenberg coordinating that with us and running that, and this will help us move along a little quicker that we've filled out that survey. That'll give us a good base of information to work from, so thank you for that. And again, just wanted to compliment our, our staff and the auditors on the positive audit and our entire staff and commission for some of the, all of the support this year through finance committee and budgeting. And as you can see, the impacts of the additional money going towards OPEB and our pension liabilities is starting to pay off. We're not on the naughty list at the state level, so which is always a good thing. And we're paying off a lot of our long-term debt. If you looked on the one page, as far as our outstanding bond payments, we really only have a special assessment bond out there and then a DDA fire station bond after this fiscal year. We'll be making our last big payment on the city hall complex in City Central Park this year, so that bond will be paid off as well. So kudos to everybody on that. Very positive, and thank you for that.
Just one item. November 20th, which is a Wednesday, believe it or not, we're entering November here pretty soon. November 20th, 5 to 7 o'clock, and this room will hold a public meeting for the rough draft for your Walker 2040 master plan. So you'll start to see some invites for that, and feel free to attend. If you have questions, please reach out to either Dan Power or myself, and we will get you filled in. We're going to divide and conquer the text a little bit and provide some historical perspective in, in chapter one, so that's going to be my task here, that I've got to get in gear and get that done. But that will be November 20th, 5 to 7. And that is enough.
Commissioner Kent.
Can I ask a question about that quick? Is that going to be similar to the forums we had in the past where there's going to be different stations, or is this more like a presentation where people are just going to get the information?
I think it's going to be a little bit of both.
Okay.
But the plan is coming together ru, in rough draft form, so you'll, the consultant will put together a presentation.
Okay.
But then there'll still be interaction and feedback.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of both.
All right.
I got a simple one, and that's been reminding, the review board's been meeting off and on with different, on mines onsite. And so the big one lately is the mines, the golf course there. They're, they should be done, but with different things going on with the weather, whatnot, but the mining operation has ceased. So getting up things back together is in process, so moving in the right direction just a little, I guess, a little behind schedule. But other than that, you'll hear more from us, but it's going the right direction.
Commissioner DeShane?
None.
Commissioner Heisinga?
None.
Commissioner Groters?
I attended the Fiensisle straw ribbon cutting last week, and it was, it was great to see what they've come up with there and watching the kids with their robotics room and stuff. That was really, that was really cool, and they did, they did a really very nice job with their presentation, and I was very impressed.
Commissioner Glanville?
Just a couple of things. I have one question. I have some concerns about the, the, sorry, I just lost my thinking, the agendas. I feel like we're getting them increasingly later in the week, and it becomes difficult to review some of that information and get things taken care of prior to the meeting on Monday. So I wanted to just clarify, what is the expectation there? Is there one?
Um, I think that's something we would probably have to have a more-
So balancing those things, maybe that's a discussion that we have with the manager's office and the clerk's office moving forward to get some maybe clarification on that, and then some discussion on what our expectation and needs are.
Yeah. Especially since we have weekly meetings, I know it can be really difficult to turn an agenda around from Monday night to, you know, so, but I don't know if there's some way we can even just get a schedule of what might be discussed in the next couple weeks, even if it's not a formal agenda. That would be helpful to be able to.
Right. And I know there are some challenges with that, with the public nature of the agendas, and that's the other thing that is considered, but certainly something worthy of discussion, I think.
All right. And on a more important note, I just wanted to verify the hours for trick-or-treating this week.
It's on the website.
5:30 to 7:30.
That's what I thought. I thought it was 5:30, 7:30. I just wanted to make sure, because people have been asking.
And bring an umbrella.
Yeah, that's right.
We've already started. If anybody wants to come by the house.
Oh, there you go.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay. To our clerk.
Just to elaborate on Commissioner Glanville's comment, before I, or when I came, they didn't do the commission packets till Thursday, sometimes Friday. But my rule of thumb is noon on Thursday, I'm sorry, noon on Wednesday. All of the, everybody internally knows that. With our ordinance committee meeting, though, and we don't have a meeting November 11, Dan Powers and I did talk, and then he had to submit it to Jeff Sluggit. So this one, if you ever get them on Thursday, it's because we're waiting on something. So it wasn't a heavy load for this one, and we wanted to get the first reading on here, so we were waiting until Jeff Sluggit gave that to me on late Thursday.
Right. And I do recall that was an item of discussion, making sure that those items got onto this agenda, because they have been bouncing around that committee.
Right. And then the next, the second reading will be December, so it really won't be like publicized and official until seven days after publication, so we didn't want that first reading to go to late November. So there's always usually a reason, otherwise I'm pretty, pretty strict about, everybody has to get it to me by noon on Wednesday.
All right. Thanks.
Anything else, sir?
Nope. We're good.
All right. Perfect. Then from my list, I was able to attend the Boy Scouts Adventure Point grand opening, and what a facility that is. It was really great experience being there, and I was able to spend some time looking around, got to tour all the attractions, and just to be on that site and think about all the opportunities scouts in Walker and across West Michigan are going to have, I don't think, it's hard, sometimes I don't realize just how big a map that facility serves. So it's the only one in the region. The next Boy Scouts facility, I think, of that type is in Traverse City. So really, there are people from all over West Michigan coming to Walker for what the offerings of this facility are, especially now with the acres of property that they've got. They've got the setup for overnight camping and all these different experiences that they can offer for kids. So shout out to them, looking forward to the impacts that they'll have on the community, and also shout out to the Chamber for coordinating the ribbon cutting, and to everyone who spoke at that event. Really looking forward to seeing that grow and thrive. The next item on my list was touched on by Daryl, but the strategic planning session, I'm really looking forward to that. Everyone, November 4th, in this room, I believe. Going to be a really good experience. I very much am akin to the type of thinking that that strategic planning session will have, I think, getting to talk a little bit more about priority setting and what we view the role of the mission and what things we want to get done. So looking forward to that. The only other thing I wanted to comment, I didn't really take the chance when we had our auditor here, but the financials for the city are just outstanding. And I was looking through there, and one thing that really stuck out to me was the building permits. Did you guys happen to catch that number? In the three different areas, so you have commercial, industrial, and residential, the building permits accounted for $10 million roughly each. So talk about diversified development, investment in the city, continued growth. That is just a testament to how well we are doing. And I really, it's what a great time to be us and serving on this board, and, you know, the continued growth and development is making us look good. So again, that's just a testament to the great work everyone's doing here, and here's to many more years of that. And that's it for me. So barring anything further, oh, Daryl, you have something?
Just to piggyback on that comment on the building permits, because you can see how that directly translates to the income tax revenue and our growth there. So, I mean, it's the residents and the jobs, so that's why it's, you know, we're always about jobs, and it's paying off, especially while the economy's doing well.
That's right.
Yep.
And the other half of that is that when the economy is doing poorly, income tax is an area where you take heavy hits. So good financial management and making sure that we're preparing for that rainy day when it does come is just as important.
Something to talk about, November 4th.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Dan Kent. So seeing nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
Motion by Commissioner Kent.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Groters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.